Item one of the agenda to receive and accept apologies for absence. Now, can I, just before we start to receive and accept, point out that we should be accepting individual apologies, not just as a whole, and that they should be monitored and minuted by the clerk so that we can see if there's a pattern emerging for any councillors that are absent. Are there any apologies?
Um, Tina Cadell, and I think she sent her report around, and Tina Cruz and Claire Bowes has also said she can't be here because she has Covid.
So apologies accepted for Tina Cadell. Apologies accepted for Tina Cruz. And apologies accepted from Claire Bowes. More than murmuring, can I have a show of hands? Yes, she's got Covid. Yeah, okay. Item two, to denote declaration of members' personal prejudicial and disclosable pecuniary interests in respect of items on the agenda. There's just myself for 7.1. Item three, minutes, to confirm that the minutes of the meeting held on the 14th of June 2022 are a true and accurate record. Yes, Catherine? Oh, you're agreeing? Yeah? To receive an update on items from the previous meeting, if not items on the agenda for this meeting. Anything to update?
I don't think there's much to say other than already in your pack. We have started to have a look at suitable portable flagpoles. So if anyone's got any feedback on that, we've put a couple of examples in your packs, not on the agenda to do anything with. They're not terribly expensive, so really it's a question of looking at what is best for us. And the other is, I have let NCC know that we'd like to be part of the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Fund programme, but it looks from Tina's report as though we are going to get some electric vehicle charging points sooner or later, so maybe there's more to come as well.
Okay, Keith?
The one thing we thought about, the millstone one, I think you have to fill unless you're gonna, I mean, if it's full of water, I'm not sure how you'd move it, and I think that's the idea, that it's filled with something, and that could be the issue with that one. If we do have it at a site, we've then got to fill the base.
Looks as though you have to get sailors to stand on it.
Item four to res... Oh, sorry. Sorry, Charlotte.
Sorry, apologies, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but if we're having a portable flagpole, where are we thinking of it being situated? I know that we can't have it where it's permanent due to the highways and some things that might. So if it's a portable one, do we still have any idea where that would be located?
As far as I'm aware, we would use it on Remembrance Day, and it would be down by the memorial and any other occasions where it would be appropriate to have a flag. Is there anywhere else, Jane?
There that we can move it about and take it where we would want to put it, but it wouldn't be kept anywhere for any length of time, I wouldn't have thought at all.
It wouldn't be like a permanent flag on it? Okay, thanks.
Item four, to receive reports. Chairman's report. On 16th of June, I attended the finance meeting. On 17th of June, we went to Pensethorpe Park with the visitors from Visa and the Twinning Association. On the 18th of June, it was quite a busy day. 10 o'clock welcomed the Twinning Association and their guests from Visa. Their chairman and myself exchanged gifts which are in the office waiting to be displayed. I think, did everyone get a chance to see the... What phone? There, yeah. And the Twinning Association also presented the town council with an engraved memento to commemorate 35 years of the Twinning Association. They also gave one to Visa to take back home as well. At 11 o'clock, I then went on to be one of the judges for the town crier's competition. Unfortunately, the weather was not in our favour, and so not as many people attended as we'd hoped. It was, however, the first one, and so I hope, hopefully, there will be many more to come, and world will get out to come and watch. I'd like to thank Mike Weave and his wife Caroline for organising the event. I think, have we actually sent a thank you letter? I think we did, didn't we, Sue, don't we? Yeah. And then in the evening, we attended the open house for the German visitors. On the 24th of June, we attended the lighting of the beacon at Lochneaton for midsummer. This was an interesting display of times gone by in Watten and how the loch used to look. People were encouraged to take a picnic and enjoy the evening, which several families had done. That's the end of my report. Nice chair's report. Oh, sorry, Keith. 4.2, First Lieutenant's Report.
Thank you, Chair. 16th of June, I attended the Finance Committee. 18th of June, I also attended the representation of Visa and then the town crier competition. And can I just say, as an aside, there, I was delighted to see who won it because it's where my daughter lives, and when I spoke to him, he said he just lived around the corner from where she did. And when I told you you're a town crier, I didn't know we had a town crier, but there we are anyway. 21st of June, I met Will from TTSR at the cemetery to discuss a grave that has to be dug there, and on 24th of June, attended the CHT Management Committee.
Thank you. 4.3, District Councillors' Report. Did Claire send anything in?
I think from Claire, just the one from Tina that's gone round.
Yes, Keith. Thank you, Keith. County Councillors' Report. 4.5, Clerk's Report.
As in your pack, I did ask about the 106 money, particularly for Level Garden, because I was a bit concerned we were running out of time for that. I had the date of the July 22 in my mind. Fortunately, we have got until 2024 to spend that money, so we have got a bit more time to plan what we do want to do with that. It has this particular sort of batch of money, has to be spent at Level Garden play areas, which isn't in any dire need of new equipment at the moment, so I think a really good thought of how we best spend that money up there within the next year. So that's that one. I think Liz will talk about reclaim the rain, I've mentioned. Parish Partnership Scheme is happening again this year, so we're still waiting for the solar lighting for the brush shelters and for the new SAM2 sign and the trod which we put in for this year. So if there's anything coming up towards the end of this year, then that's something to think about. We have the Antiques Fair going on in the High Street on Sunday. Sue has asked if anybody would be available to man the road closure between 10 and 12 on Sunday morning, chiefly to let people in and out of the Methodist Church car park. So if any volunteers, please let Sue know, Keith. Oh, thank you, Keith. And the other one is toilets. We're looking at revamping the public toilets. I'm contacting reps if I can find them out there. One guy is happy to meet at 1 o'clock on Monday, so if anyone is available. James, I know you've had an interest, but it's short notice and it's middle of the day, but 1 o'clock on Monday, if you do want to come up and have any input in future design of the toilets, really.
That's it, I think. Catherine first, sorry.
The question was about the Level Gardens funding. I know it's got to be spent specifically on Level Gardens. Has it got to be specifically on plate equipment? Can it be, for example, on landscaping and other things within that area?
We did have some money to replace the fencing from that part several years ago now, actually, but yes, they allowed the fencing, so I would say other things could be considered, yeah, as long as it's at Level Garden.
Jane?
Well, I told the guy to come to the office and then we'll walk across. Okay, yep.
Item 4.6, update from the Watten and Sayem Flood Action Group. Liz?
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to just speak to you a bit, and you've had two reports from me, and I'm happy to answer any questions. But I think I wanted to emphasise that this reclaim the rain funding that we've got is an enormous opportunity for Watten. The project team were very keen, because we told them about not only the flooding but forgotten Watten, that we really celebrate getting this money with our residents. So they'll put their mind to that. So I think there's going to be an awful lot of work over the next five years. We've got a good team at the county who understand what they want to do. And as you've seen in the report, it is a pilot trying to persuade the government and the Environment Agency and DEFRA that they really need to think differently about inland communities who suffer from surface water flooding. So you will see that I said that I thought that a lead councillor would be highly desirable. That's also what the project team thing thought, and they would like a working group to work with us all. And I just did wonder whether the emergency working group might do that, but I don't know how your procedures go. Because through doing the work with the reclaim the rain, I think we'll learn a lot about where do we need to put some of our emphasis on emergency planning. But that's all still very much in a sort of embryo state, isn't it? So I think that's all I wanted to say, and I'm happy to take questions from people, really.
Yes, Keith. Yes, Jane?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point about how amazing it is that the work has been put in to get this, this money for the town. This has put Watten on the map in a really immeasurable way. If we can make the most of what's available to us now, it would be worth it. I'm quite happy to work on a working group, but I'm already lead councillor for planning, and I am on the emergency working group, so I wouldn't want to be lead on two areas. But I'm perfectly happy to work with them.
Thank you, Jane. Yes, Keith?
Well, Chair, I was going to propose that at the next meeting on the agenda, we have a proposal that the action group are involved with what you're talking about, and we have the names, so everybody knows who they are, and that we have the proposal for a lead councillor for this. So rather than trying to look around everybody here and catch their eye, you know it's going to come up, and therefore people can think about whether they're prepared to do it or not. And I think, rather than just trying to get somebody to say no to it, I think we're better off... I know it's putting it off for two weeks, we just hope we don't get a downpour in two weeks, and then we can get some proper names, well, not proper names, but names forward. So it's everybody, because if you say now who's on the emergency committee, there'll be, oh, I don't know whether I am or not. So I think we need to have that put forward, and then the name of a lead councillor. So I'd like to propose that.
Second, are all those in favour? Yeah, we put that on the agenda, Jane? Stan, did you have your hand up?
No, it was only to basically concur what's been said, and I'm sat here thinking, I don't want to do it, don't want to do it. I'm trying to wind down on things I'm doing so that I can concentrate on certain other things. Sorry? Oh, yeah, on. But I'm honestly humbled by the amount of work Liz has done as somebody who's not on the council, that I feel that only me, that every one of us in this room has a serious obligation to support this, otherwise all that hard work could be go to waste. So I'm in with regards to supporting and being involved in a working group. As for the lead councillor, I certainly won't be putting my hand up for that today, but you certainly have my unequivocal support as a councillor for the Flood Action Group.
Thank you. So to note the MND, the Works in Progress list.
Everybody should have had a copy of this, so if there's any questions, please let me know. The one thing I thought was on here and isn't is the street light, painting of the street light columns which Charlotte mentioned to me in an email today. I have followed that up again. Amy's have said, yes, it's to be done, but they couldn't give me a date, so we're still no further forward with that one. And it's something I think Charlotte did say, could it go on the next agenda? So I will put that and some other points to update on work in the High Street on the agenda next time as well. But if there's anything else on this list, please ask.
Thank you, Jane.
Can I just say one thing? No, I'll say more than one thing. The High Street at the traffic light end of town is looking much, much better since the ball was painted. And I have to say, they have done a good job on that, and it looks very nice. I noticed they're doing something with the kebab place and what was the Portuguese café, that's being repainted. And I note what Tina said, that it was a shame some landlords wouldn't take advantage of it, because when you look on that side of the road now, it's looking nice, but you look on the other side of the road, and it still looks an absolute mess. The shop fronts where people are storing things, they don't look nice at all. Now, I don't know how much more we can do, but I think we do need to note that because there were public complaints about it, that the High Street is starting to look much tidier and much brighter than previous, but we note there's still work to be done.
Item six, public participation. Item seven, finance. 7.1, to approve payments for June 2022. Has everyone had a chance to look at them?
There are one or two more to add which weren't on the list that went out. One is £50 donation that was agreed last meeting, I think, for Lochneaton, and that wasn't put on your list. Jubilee Gardens, the gardener, there's £72 owed to him for two months' work. And the other one was the Norse invoice for the clock tower report, and that's £3,200 plus VAT. There is also likely to be a bill, I think, from the museum for the biscuits. I think biscuits were all taken on the Twinning Association meeting, so Chris is putting a bill in for that, about £40, I think, just to let you know.
Yes, Catherine?
Just saying for about the biscuits, that we did agree that there was a fund for that event, so that just comes straight out of that funding, so it's not a problem?
Yes?
Yeah, I agree. It's not a big issue, it was a museum's property, they kindly helped us out there, and somebody has to pay for them, there's no reason why we shouldn't.
Item 7.2, to receive the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on 16th of June 2022. Are you all happy with those minutes? Yeah?
Can I just remind people that when we receive the Finance Committee minutes at the meeting following the Finance Committee, they are at that stage still in draft, because they go to the next Finance Committee where they will be actually agreed. So what you're doing here at the moment is receiving the draft minutes.
So we don't need to...
So people just need to be aware that when they're receiving the minutes, they're receiving the draft minutes.
7.3, to agree recommendations from the meeting held on 16th of June 2022. Reclamation, recommendations to full council. Point one, to accept the review of expenses policy with the only suggested amendment being made to include the months where the chairman's allowance should be paid, May, August, November and February. Any comments on that? Yes, Catherine?
That amendment is just a tidying up amendment, so it makes, it makes the process very clear, because it says, I think it said it's quarterly allowance, so that's just to make it clear when the payments are made.
All those in favour? Section two, to consider merging the communications policy and social media policy into one document. Yes, Catherine?
We have talked about this as a council before, I think it's about three years ago, but I think we were sidetracked by the demon Covid. And we have two policies that are complementary, and really they need to be read in conjunction with one another to actually cover the whole gamut of communications. So what we were suggesting is, rather than having the two policies on file, that we ask the office to actually combine those, and then if they can bring the merged document to the next meeting, we can agree that as a policy.
All those in favour? Thank you. Thank you, Toby. I think, Stan, you've just committed yourself to assisting with that so that it is regulatory. Thank you. 7.4, to receive the internal auditors' report for 2122. You all had a chance to look at that. Did you want to say anything on that, Jane?
I don't think there's much to say. I think Stephen always does a good report for us, so if you've all had a chance to have a look at that, there wasn't many points raised actually this time round. So it is all there, we do need to min it formally that you have all seen it, really, which is what we're doing.
All those in favour of accepting that? Item 7.5, to approve and sign the annual government statement.
Again, that's a formality, you all need to have seen that and make sure you've read it. And any questions on it, please get back to us, I think, but it has all gone out, and that's what you're agreeing and accepting for the year.
All those in favour of approving? Thank you. 7.6, to approve and sign the accounting statements for the financial year ending 31st of March 2022. Again, is everyone happy with those? All those in favour? Thank you. Section eight, to review archive policy and standing orders.
I'd just say, I added standing orders to that because if people have had a look, 12F refers to the draft minutes and recordings of the meeting to be destroyed once the minutes have been produced. That's not what we're saying in our archive policy, I think. So whether we leave it in that they are destroyed once the minutes are produced, or whether we carry on and as we are, they are available, the recordings are available on YouTube for however long, that's really what we were looking at with that one.
Any questions on that? Stan, could I just ask, is there any sort of particular policy on live streaming as to whether you'd have to keep that for a certain amount of time? Would you? Thank you. Sorry, Catherine.
I just, I've spoken to Jane about this earlier on. Some time ago, we agreed a protocol for, if you remember that we did a lot of work extracting the minutes from old, the old minute books, so that we've got a record of how the council's made minutes throughout the, you know, throughout the years. And those are a matter of public record. They're held electronically. And we did agree a protocol for how those could be accessed, how they could be used, and what limitations there are on that. And there is a wording in the minutes of August 2019. So I'm asking that that protocol is added to the archive policy as an appendix. It's not something new. It's something we've already agreed, but it needs to sit alongside the archive policy.
Thank you, Catherine.
Can we agree that so soon?
Have you heard that? All those in favour of that? Thank you.
Yeah, just to sort of tie that up, at the moment, is it worth taking out the standing orders, the stipulation to dispose of the minutes, the recordings after the minutes are produced? If we take that out and then we can put whatever we wish into policy, and at least that will tie them so they match together?
Yes.
That's okay. I'll take that out.
Thank you. Item nine, to receive NPS quincennial report for the clock tower and consider works required. Has everyone had a chance to look at that?
Yes, Catherine. It doesn't actually say very much about whether we need a ladder or what sort of ladder we should have, does it? Which is what one of the initial questions was.
With the greatest respect to my fellow councillor, she missed that page. The recommendations, for those of you that haven't had the opportunity to see the paper, are that it's, in keeping with the structure, a fixed wooden ladder runs from the ground floor to the bell tower landing, and that a balustrade be put round. But what I found most startling in there was the approximate cost recommendation that the ladder would be £150. And with greatest respect, Catherine, I thought that would have caught your eye. But as I've got the mic at the moment, Madam Chair, I think it was a very, very comprehensive report. And they've clearly done a very good job. And I think the way that the recommended structural repairs have been graded A, B, C, D and E are very helpful to us and that we can plan a clear budget around the service of the clock tower.
Yes, Keith. Yes, Peter.
Providing we accept the report, can I ask how we're going to progress the issue to do with the ladder, etcetera? Well, because we need to agree that, because otherwise, supposedly, the clock's not going to be wound up and it's running late at the moment. It's about 10 minutes slow.
Previously, when we had the inspection undertaken five years ago, or however, NPS came back to sort of project manage the works. And I think that could possibly be the best way forward now. It might be perhaps a more expensive way than if we project managed it in-house. But it is getting the professional guys to lead on it. And I think that might be the best way forward to make sure we do get everything as it should be, including the ladder.
Well, in that case, as long as we explain to them what the report says, and it's got to be a wooden ladder and we don't end up with a lift and everything else, that's fine. So hopefully, when we accept this, we'll agree that part. And can I ask, as an aside, now, have the locks been changed? Have you put some dirt on it?
Can I ask, all those in favour of receiving and accepting the report? Catherine, would it be sensible to put this to the finance committee for the next meeting so that they can break down some of the costs and allow budgeting?
I think that would be quite helpful because we can prioritize, it is prioritized. So we can actually work out when the spending is going to have an impact on the budget. So that's something we can do, looking at the four-year plan.
Put that forward then, Jane, please. Thank you. Sorry, Don.
Again, Alan, who undertook the report, would project manage, I think, if we wanted to go down that route. And again, we'd have to check what that would cost. It wouldn't perhaps be the cheapest option. But he would be basing what works needed, obviously, on his report. And it was followed through quite well previously.
So do we want to agree now that they project manage? Or should we put that through for the next meeting after the finance committee? And your proposal is?
My proposal is that the clerk approaches NPS and asks them for cost guidance on project management. And if that is in keeping with standard project management rates, to commission them to begin the work immediately. Is that sufficient information for the clerk? That's my proposal.
Have a second. All those in favour? Item 10, to agree any recommendations made at the cemetery working group meeting held on the 28th of the 6th, 22.
We agree that we won't have any more benches, that the clerk was going to explore other means of memorials that we're going to, we asked the clerk to look at what other towns do in respect of interment of ashes inside on burial plots, and to talk to the local undertakers, etcetera, and come back with a report for that. And the other one was, we had a letter from someone asking about why it was so expensive to have their ashes interred. And we looked at that and we agreed, that's the rate for non-residents, and the person wasn't non-resident. And we're looking at the, a new headstone to be put in the old cemetery and the curbing to be taken away. And as long as it fits in with the rules of the cemetery, the size of the headstone, that'll be acceptable. Oh, and the water pump, yes, that the clerk's going to have, nearly forgot that, the clerk's going to have the water tested, not her water tested, water in the cemetery tested, and the repairs to the pump. And that comes within her financial remit under financial standing orders.
Yes, Catherine.
Did you mention about the allocation of ashes plots, that we've asked Jane to check with other authorities and with the undertakers? No, I know. I'm too ahead.
All those in favour of agreeing those recommendations? Thank you. Okay. Item 11 is planning. Keith? And then can I pass this over to you, Jane?
Okay, no problem. 11.1, 3PL20220687VAR, variation of condition two on 3PL2019155D, 154D, to enable construction of a single garage at 20 Fair Edway, plot 60. That's on the Barrett development. I initially was confused as to why they were putting an application in. I thought that permit development rights might have been removed. But it's actually been developed, been built by the developers. So I assume someone's bought it and changed the way they want the garage done. So I didn't see any problem with it. Anybody got any issues? And the second one, 11.2, is 30B20220041OB and 3PL20210032F, application for approval of open space scheme as required by Schedule 2 of the Section 106 agreement, Watten land north of Worridge Road. That's the Able housing development and not the store site. The areas are only small areas of open space, but there's no implications for the town council because it's all going to a management committee. So I didn't see any issues worth raising. Anybody else? And I just wanted to raise another point backing on what Peter said earlier on about the shop down the road that has the storage and is not open. Britain have come back and I don't really think that their explanation is very good. They've said that there's no difference between A1 and storage, and it is. You can have ancillary storage to A1, but you can't just have storage A1. So I wanted to do some research on case law on that before we go back to them and I bring it back in the next meeting.
Thank you very much for that.
While we're on planning, this came in too late for it to go on the agenda, but this is a proposal for two digital 75-inch LCD display screens, one on each side of the street hub unit outside Seven Chasten Place, Watten. So British Telecom are proposing to put in digital signage at Chasten Place. It will be on the next agenda. I think that's probably really good for the town, but it might not be so good for us when we want to put marquees and things up at Chasten Place. But that's just an observation. And the other one, the land to the rear of Dorrington House, that application has been passed to the planning committee, who will be looking at that on the 5th of July.
We wait to see what happens.
It's very much on the road, very near the road, Keith, so perhaps it won't be that big an issue, but it won't be as convenient as it was perhaps.
Item 12, to pass a resolution to exclude the public and press to consider legal matters. All those in favour? Do you want to turn this thing off?